Yeah. I don't even like to say.
For what?
One of the girls, uh, Eric, she did that. She has paper points.
Yes.
And every day she selects a pie for you. It's like happy, it's a happy face, sad or grumpy. Today she was happily at home.
For seven. Okay, um, fast, I, I didn't.
Yeah.
Yes, well, that's a big.
Yeah, but you know, if you're in your car, like, you don't need to wear any. And you know what? Somebody put up a post-it, says if you're wearing your mask in your car with no one else who's in there, maybe after this is all over, you need to stay at home.
Can I go home?
Yeah.
Like the movie, like.
It will stop the camera.
Uh.
It's not, it doesn't.
I've always found. That's hard to.
Do you want like?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, I got stuff. Fine.
Okay. I think we'll get.
Yeah. Yeah, hey, I got, I got some. But, or not. On the side of my, my closet. Oh, all this shit. Yeah.
Uh huh.
We know it's, it's, it's not. Whatever. Human being. In the. They are. I thought about. Five. Five. My word. Mom. Um, for.
Can you hear this, Mayor? In that's a game, you could take that long.
(laughing).
How are you? There you go. Gosh, one second. What are you guys gonna? Now, what's in there? Okay. That's what I, that's what I like about talking to you. You're like right to the point, easy. Well, I had, I had. Mm hmm. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So how's work going? I'm distracted. Catch myself. All, all amusing. That's. Fire goes the day. Yeah. I don't, I don't know about you, but it's just like, I, I can't wait to get back to the office so that I can limit my, um, work. It's just like, it's. Although I do get up like afternoon and walk around. Or, but it may take place. There's no. As a man. Seven thirty, four minutes. Off night. You're there and I'm. Yeah. Because it's. But I do think. And I am looking forward to. There's also been this. Yeah. Especially. Why I'm sure. Really decide. Thank you. And I miss that. I can always. Oh, look, crap, I'm. But that's a good. Decision. Right? Yeah. Yeah. A slight. Yeah, I think that's part of the challenge. Is to have these creative team, there's supposed to be ideas, big bold ideas. Didn't, you know, your office, your backyard or whatever, it just feels like you shrink. And even when you get on the, you know, it's like on these telephones, use Microsoft. Not at all. It's just not. So, so, so. Huh? You think so?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can only see, I mean, other than, uh, thumbnails at the bottom. The thing is, it's, it seemed to be very stable. Um, compared to like, um, in meeting, is that why I go to meeting? I, I don't like it all. Zoom is okay. Yeah? Right? Well, I'm not very technically savvy, so anything easy, but I like. Right? Well, your. Our next group. Does. Ever clear. Yeah. All the ideas. Uh huh. Did you see the reporter from Good Morning America? That just, I mean, when they pan back just a little too much, you could see his leg there. (laughing). No, I. Stationed really should be. I love Tina's mask. That's too cool. I think even when this is all over, you should go ahead and wear that to work every day. Oh, that's good, too. Yeah, what does over even mean anymore? Yeah, they've, um, they've extended through May and, and they're still, um, requiring masks in public, although they have an enforcement. But it's still very conservative and like fun there.
All right, it is five o'clock. Hello? So, can you hear me? Good? Hello? Is that better? Okay, we can turn it up just a little bit, please. It is five o'clock and we're going to get started. The city of Castle Hills City Council will convene into a special meeting on April thirtieth, twenty twenty at five P M. And the council chamber is located at two zero nine Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. We're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting into order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Uh, but don't believe we have any set up for the invocation. Uh, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Chief, would you start us? Thank you, chief. Uh, let's see here, citizen comments. Let me check the email and if we have any. I don't see any comments yet. Uh, we'll proceed to the agenda items. Discussion and possible action on the extension of the third declaration of the local state of disaster and public health emergency executed by Mayor J R Trevino on March twenty six, twenty twenty. Uh, this is the, I believe, third time that we've been, we've renewed this. If I remember correctly, the city attorney is recommending that we extend it to the next council meeting, which would be, is it May nineteenth?
May nineteenth, sir.
Uh, May nineteenth. Thank you, Ms. Rapley. Uh, basically, this will. We're kind of standing behind, uh, what Governor Abbott said, with Bear County Judge said, and with the San Antonio mayor said. And we're also keeping ourselves, uh, in line for potential reimbursement for any expenses incurred as a result of, uh, additional work or anything that we've had to incur. Uh, do we have any questions? Ms. Winger?
Yeah, I, I have a question, um, because.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
Try. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, I have a question because you're referring to, um, aside from the order of the governor, which of course we are all under, but you're also referring to the county judge. And the problem with that is that they've decided to parse the words of the governor, um, and actually go against, um, some of what he ordered. So I think that we might have a problem with that. Um, there has also been, um, information that probably Mr. May is more detail oriented on than I am, that came from the Attorney General, um, advising all of the U S attorneys to look out for constitutional violations in these orders. So I don't know if he knows more about it than I do. I, I just know what I've read about it, but, um, I, I suspect that that might become a case and we might actually be on the wrong side if we, if we mention what the county is doing because they've now gone against the governor. Mr. Ray?
Well, as I understand the, uh, the directives that are coming out of Bear County and the, uh, city of San Antonio, is they're just recommending the wearing a mask, which I think that's appropriate. I don't, I don't foresee any constitutional conflict at this point. In fact, I think there's a messaging from the governor's office that localities can put into place those things which are not in direct conflict with what's been ordered by the governor. And I don't see a direct conflict at this point.
Well, well, I agree with you. Um, if you, you know, take all the words apart, but the problem is that what the county and city of San Antonio have done is that they've issued an order for people to wear masks at the same time they're saying that they're not going to enforce it. Um, so, you know, it, it's confusing to people because it's an order and it can't be an order if they're not going to enforce it. That, that's my only, my only problem with it. Mr. Ray?
I, I, I do understand that, uh, slight variance, but I, I will say it plain and clear for those who are listening. I don't think it's, uh, it's wise for us to distance ourself from the wearing of the mask. The wearing of the mask is really for the sake of all of our population. It is the standard. And I would encourage all citizens that are listening, regardless of what, uh, order comes from the city, the county, or the governor, that it is the standard of care, at least in the next foreseeable several weeks. I don't see a constitutional issue here. I would propose that we accept the extension till May nineteenth, twenty twenty, uh, as it's been suggested.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Gregory?
How's the governor's edict? And the judge's edict? Deal with reopening of churches and restaurants? Are churches now able to bring anybody they want to in or not? Are restaurants going to be open? And if so, under what guidelines? Are we, so I'm just curious what we're, whether we approve, what exactly we are, are approving? And, um, I don't know.
I have, uh, Mr. Schnell here. Give me one second. Mr. Schnell, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Feel free to chime in.
Okay. Um, so, um, in response to Mr. Gregory's, uh, questions, I believe that matters concerning churches and restaurants are totally governed by the a G A dash eighteen issued by Governor Abbott on Monday. Um, basically, um, restaurants effective on May first tomorrow. And I, I think it, 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 I think it's tomorrow. I, I don't remember what time, um, it said. Uh, restaurants can open for dining in service, provided that, uh, patrons are kept at least six feet apart. Um, menus are either on, uh, electronic devices or on disposable things, paper, rather than reusable menus, um, things of that nature. And that, um, churches can have in-person services, um, at their election, but are limited to, again, um, twenty-five percent of their total occupancy. So if a church wants to hold a service in person, um, it will need to police the social distancing requirements um, that have been recommended by the Centers for Disease Control, which I, I think are incorporated into Governor Abbott's G A eighteen.
Will they have to wear a mask?
The governor's statement, uh, indicates that masks are encouraged. The governor is not requiring the wearing of a mask. Um, the difference between that and what the county judge's executive order issued yesterday, um, is that the county judge's executive order does, um, mandate the wearing of masks under certain circumstances. Um, but specifically provides that there will be no fine or other penalty if someone chooses not to do so. Um, that is consistent with, uh, the governor's, um, order, um, which says that, um, although he's only strongly recommending the wearing of match, uh, ma- uh, masks or facial coverings, um, he's not requiring it, and he is, by his executive order, prohibiting other governmental bodies from enforcing penalties against folks who decline to wear masks. Um.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Do we have any further questions? We have a first by Mr. May and a second by Mr. Isbrand. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed three to one with Ms. Winger abstaining.
Mayor?
Opposing.
I'm sorry, opposing.
Yeah, opposing. Mayor, just real quick in relation to this, um, uh, originally we had closed City Hall through today, but we're probably going to extend that at some point through the latter part of May. Um, some folks are still working remotely and staggering in and out of City Hall. Um, but I'll be putting a new, um, plan or revised plan on the website with further details, uh, tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rapley. Uh, item number two, discussion and possible action to appoint a person to fill the vacancy on place two on the Castle Hill City Council. Uh, Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Isbrand and I met, um, for some at length to review the four people who applied for this interim office position. Took a long time. We have a unanimous recommendation that Mr. Frank Paul. We have a unanimous recommendation that Mr. Frank Paul be selected by this council to fill the vacancy that we just existed in April the first. And there, and, you know, Mark left April the first, I think it was.
I'm sorry, what?
Mark Sanderson left April the first, wasn't it?
No.
Well, whenever Mr. Sanderson left. Therefore, with approval of Mr. Isbrand, I make a motion that we accept our recommendation and I nominate Mr. Paul to fill this position.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. May. Uh, Mr. Isbrand, do you have any additional comments?
I would just say that Mr. Gregory and I are very grateful to all of the applicants for their commitment, their interest, and their dedication. It was not an easy decision and we're grateful that they made us work hard at coming to this decision and, or to coming to this recommendation. So I thank them all and look forward to their continued involvement in our city in any number of ways.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. May?
Before we take a formal vote, I just wanted to say, I, it pleases me to know and to know that we have four citizens that are willing to make that sacrifice and to put time and effort. And for those that are watching, you know, I'm going to be watching for the future for more people to come forward and to serve on the committees, to serve on this council at, at a later time. So thank you again for submitting the applications.
I, I would echo my colleagues' sentiments. I'm appreciative of everybody that applied and I'm thankful for Mr. Isbrand and Mr. Gregory for sifting through these applications and bringing a recommendation to council. With that being said, all in favor of appointing Mr. Frank Paul to fill the vacancy on place two? All opposed?
I'm not, there is no opposition to this type of appointment, so I'm not voting because it's been made clear to me that Mr. Paul is not interested in me voting for him. However, I would like to say that there are two things that, that he brings to the table or has brought to the table in the past that I would certainly hope he would bring again because it's going to be very much needed. First of all, with his, you know, own finances, he's always been extremely frugal and that's been, going to be really necessary, given the fact that the city's going to have less money to operate with. And secondly, he's a really top-notch negotiator, so I hope that everybody will take advantage of both of those.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Are you abstaining?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
There's no abstention. It's simply an up or down vote.
Okay, so it's three, four. A motion passes with Ms. Winger abstaining. Item number three, discussion and possible action authorizes city manager to execute a contract with Intermountain Slurry Seal, Inc. to perform street maintenance work as part of the City of Castle Hills Street Maintenance Program. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. This street maintenance, just giving some history to our new council members. Back in December of eighteen, we engaged R. P. S. to develop a street maintenance program, which the bulk of these streets for street maintenance that were selected from our C. I. P., the first phase of the streets. The thirty-two streets were bid, we went out for bid and I believe December, I mean, excuse me, March of two thousand and nineteen, we received no bids. As a result, we re-engaged our I. L. A. with the county. That way, we could get on their schedule and their selected contractors for obviously a better price and volume. And right now, the streets selected are part of the micro-surfacing application. This is the, and back of the agenda has the, I believe, the twelve streets that are applicable here. The contractor is ready to go and as a result of this being provided to me, I wanted to make sure I got council's authorization. The money that was budgeted four hundred thousand for street maintenance this year in our adopted budget. Again, this quotes, the, we received this for two hundred and sixteen thousand, I believe.
I'm sorry, what it, how much is it?
It's two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Out of four hundred thousand?
Well, we budgeted four hundred thousand for street maintenance work for this particular, particular application, this micro-surfacing with this contractor and these particular streets that have been chosen based on the O. C. I. score of seventy-one to eighty-four, which is in the micro-surfing area. These are the streets that are selected right now for two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Could you please help me out where the list of streets is? I can't find it.
It's, I don't have the exact list in the packet, but there's a, a line, a map in the back that outlines all the streets that are impacted.
So, so all, all of the streets that have names here, which are impossible to read because they're too small?
Okay, well, I can send that list back out to council, but...
Yeah, that'd be good.
Just to clarify, Ms. Winger, is Sir Arthur Court Wigford Way, Sheffield, Chaddington, and Oak Royal Drive?
Chaddington, we keep redoing Chaddington? You know, many times we've fixed Chaddington? We're going to do it again? About five?
Well, again, this is the micro-surfacing. There's two options, I mean, not two options, but there's two components of this. This is for aggregate asphalt. It's a type of slurry seal that also helps impact as far as address minor cracking, weathering, loss of friction, so preserve the integrity of these streets to improve the longevity of them.
Ms. Winger?
Well, I have expressed this before and I continue to have a problem with the process. The reason I have a problem is that when this was first brought up, the gentleman who was going to do it at the time, I don't know if it's still the same company or not, came here and spoke about what it does. And the description, which is on the record, is identical to the description that we got for Reclamite. Reclamite did not work on most of the streets that it was used on. It worked on some of the streets that were in very good condition. It was used on way too many streets. And so, especially here, I'm familiar with the condition of some of these streets. If Reclamite did not work on those streets, all of which got Reclamite, I don't see that this is going to work and this is a lot of money to be spending when we're likely to be looking at a lot less money to spend. So I think it's a very bad idea at this time.
Mr. Gregory?
I'd like to ask Mr. Rapley, in the bottom here, it says under exclusions. And since I forgot my glasses, I have to hold it a little bit further away. Are these exclusions normally excluded for this type of job? Removal of heavy debris, patching, crack sealing, pavement marking removal, all things are not included in this estimate?
They're not? And then, and, and he stated that, again, I don't know if we're talking about the same person, that that was work that the city was going to have to do.
Mr. Rapley?
There, if there's any stripe in this, the city will have to come, like the, the stop sign, the bars that we have down. We'll also have to go in and tape over the reflectant that we have for our, for the fire department lays out for the, I'm sorry, I lost the hydrants. But as far as that, that's the wording in the contract that they use, but everything's been coordinated, coordinated already through this contractor with Mr. Harada from, from Public Works on this.
They'll be doing these things listed under exclusions.
If it's necessary that there be, like, for instance, there was one about tree trimming. They won't be have, they won't have to do any tree trimming because they've already surveyed the area and their machines will fit under the tree carriage, so that won't be required at this time. That was probably the biggest component they would ask of Public Works to do as part of this job, which is not necessary at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Uh, Mr. Rapley, I'd ask, you know, heeding Ms. Winger's warnings, I would like to confirm with Intermountain Slurry Seal that this is applicable for the streets that we have and that it will serve the intended purpose of extending the lifespan. Mr. May?
Well, with that and the other comments, I think it would be appropriate if we table this at least for another council meeting. I'd like to get the answers to those questions.
Mr. Rapley, you want to chime in on that?
Um, I can get those answers pretty quick, but right now, the contractor, the, the issue was the contractor was ready to do this work, but I had notified them through Mr. Schnell that, that this needed council's authority for me to sign it. So I'd have to find out if they would still be able to do this work because right now I've kind of got them on hold to get council approval, to get this schedule in line because they are working with county and city as far as these contracts to do these streets in the schedule. But as far as this Reclamite, I, I asked our engineers and it didn't sound, I, I don't know exactly what Reclamite is, per se, but they explained that this is different as far as the micro-surfing process. And these streets are selected for those reasons, to ensure they, the integrity of the streets and they preserve the life of the streets. And these were recommended by our engineers who developed the street maintenance program.
I didn't know that specifically. I apologize. Uh, Mr. May?
Okay, well, in light of that, I mean, I do know that it is going to be important that we strategically schedule repairs. I also know that when I've been walking these blocks in the last campaign, one of the most common comments was, there's no regular maintenance and maintenance has been continued and continued and continued. And we all know what happens to streets that have absolutely no maintenance. We have bigger issues that develop and then it's more costly and then we have to literally consider things like bonds or a massive reconstruction that have occurred with some regularity. So perhaps we should just move, move ahead on this and take a vote.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Isbrand?
All right.
Ms. Winger?
Yeah, the, the problem is that it isn't actually maintenance. What they do is they come in and they put down this oil-based product. Now, that is exactly what Reclamite is. It might be a slightly different consistency. What they talk about is extending the life of the street. What does that mean to people who live on the street and who pay taxes, which, as you know, our taxes are not that low? It means that the street is not going to be in better condition. It's going to be in the same condition, except we're going to claim that it's extending the life of the street. So basically, what does that mean to people? It doesn't mean much. It's just you come, you, you know, it looks like a kind of gypsy contract kind of thing. I'm not saying that it is, but the description was identical. So I would say that, you know, given the fact that we're going to have less money, I mean, I wasn't in favor of it from the beginning for that reason because it was something we had already gone through. If we hadn't gone through it, we wouldn't know that. Extending the life of the street is not going to be significant to the people who live and ride on those streets.
Ms. Winger, I would just add in there, having been to the classes the T. M. L. puts on where they talk about Public Works and the streets and extending the lives, I, I would disagree. The way that it works is it prevents the street from further degrading and requiring a full-depth reclamation where you'd have to take the whole street out. While the difference might not be substantial in visually substantial, what it does for the actual substrate of the street is...
I, I, I'm not arguing that point. I mean, that, that's a cold little scientific thing that, you know, may or may not be true that people don't see. I know that when Reclamite was put on, it actually ended up with all of this so-called sand that was, that was actually gravel, made the situation a lot worse, so that the ruts actually deepened. Now, can somebody come back and claim that, well, they tested it and the street itself overall was, was saved? I don't know, but I walk on all these streets all the time and it's very difficult. And this slurry seal is not going to make it easier to walk, let alone drive, because all of the ruts that are still there are still going to be there.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Any further comments?
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, real quick, so these streets that are selected, again, are the micro-surfing, micro-surfing. When they designed the thirty-two streets here in the street maintenance program, it's broken up into either a seal coat or a micro-surfacing. The next phase that, of the other selected streets based on funding available will be the seal coat, which are at a higher O. C. I. score. These, again, range from seventy-one to eighty-four. It's supposed to improve the street, add to that longevity. And I can, and I can outline here, here's a section under our street maintenance C. I. P. that was adopted. Under the repair rehabilitation matrix that was designed for the C. I. P., micro-surfacing is a mixture of aggregate asphalt, emulsion, cement, and water spread over the entire roadway surface. In this method, the slurry seal is applied and adhered to the existing pavement surface. Slurry seals typically address minor longitudinal, transverse, cracking, weathering, loss of friction, moisture, infiltration, and roughness. Again, to repair and to seal because the O. C. I. scores are at a lower tier for these particular streets.
Thank you, Ms. Winger.
And, and again, we budgeted four hundred thousand with the thinking that we were going to do all of these streets this year, but we did lose out on some revenue, so...
Thank you, Mr. Gregory.
Mr. Rapley, I've had a problem sometimes with what is put down on the streets, but what does this outfit guarantee? Is there a conditional guarantee of, of what the street will do for a period of time? And if it doesn't do it, what is the recourse of the city?
As far as the, like a type of warranty or the longevity of it?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure about the longevity of it. I can find out, but I know it's supposed to extend life three to five years. And then you turn around maybe in the fifth year and do a seal coat at that point, but I can definitely find that out. It's part of the, as the mayor alluded to, the way to take care of your streets.
So we have an outlet in case they do it improperly or eighteen months down the road, it clearly didn't work in certain areas, to call them back and they will correct the problem at no cost to the city?
I can confirm, I can't confirm that right now, but I believe that we can talk to them and negotiate that.
Didn't have that either with the Reclamite, which was clearly stated at the time. And I wasn't there when it was voted for, but I, you know, tried to get it removed for that reason. My predecessor, Mike Catalani, had asked that very specific question, what is the guarantee? And they were told there was none. And as far as I know, there isn't any in this either, based again on the statements that were made by the gentleman who spoke some time ago, who may or may not be the same person, but it's the same process.
I do think the city is, should expect some sort of warranty on this street. Performance is, is supposed to do X, Y, and Z, and if not, they'll come back and rectify it. You even get that, you even have a limit law for cars. You should have something like this for streets.
Well, again, as part of this, they'll be providing their, they'll be adding the city to their insurance and providing a performance bond.
Explain how the performance clause is similar to a warranty.
Well, as far as anything that happens during the work process itself, that's the bond that's provided to the city for the job not going well, damages, liability issues. But as far as the warranty, how they state, I'd have to find that out from that standpoint of, of what sort of they guarantee, uh, the longevity. Um, and I could ask our engineers too for the longevity of this application.
Well, I'm just more comfortable if there's some sort of warranty that we can sink our teeth into just in case. It's not all that it's cracked up to be. It may be absolutely the best thing for us, but just in case, I don't want to have to go back and go over these same streets again in eighteen months or two years if the under...
Well, I, I doubt in this case we would be doing that, but this is the same contractor that's doing streets for both the county and city as part of their street maintenance program too. So I'd assume that not only the same standards are in place, but if there was that case, they would have to be coming back to correct anything that they would not have done or should have done.
Just to clarify, Mr. Rapley, the work that is being done here is the same thing the city and the county are doing and we're getting it at their pricing because...
Because of the interlocal mayor.
...the need to mobilize again.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we're, we're getting more volume, more bang for the buck.
Bear County Public Works and San Antonio Public Works have vetted this process to the best interest...
Yes.
...of the city and the county. Okay.
So they had the agreements with the contractor. We just piggyback on it.
Mr. Isbrand?
So, so given that, I ask the question, is Bear County or San Antonio have some kind of a warranty on the work?
I don't know. It's a good question.
I'd have to find that out, sir.
I mean, I, I very much appreciate the intention here is the opportunity, the timing is now. Doing it with the city and county makes for probably a lot of cost efficiency, but I think it's important to understand exactly what we're investing in here and, and what guarantee we get if it is reasonable to expect any guarantee.
Ms. Winger?
Yeah, I, I don't believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're not doing this with the city and county. It's simply a process that for whatever reason, the city, and I didn't hear it, but the city... the city before, but the county uses. And so one of the things that, that happens is that when you go out and do it, people, and it happened, the same thing happened on my street. It looks pretty for a brief period of time because everything's the same color and people are happy that the street looks prettier, but it doesn't last. And apparently that's a useful thing for the county because they can spend a lot less money to go out and, you know, say to people, hey, look what we're doing for you, but it doesn't last. And if we don't have a warranty, then when people start complaining a year, two, or three down the road, I can tell you that it didn't last on, on any of the streets in our neighborhood, you know, for, for more than about, it didn't even last a year, if you recall. Your street was one of the streets that was done. It didn't last a year, but it looked very pretty when we first had it done. And this is basically the same process. So yes, people will be happy when they see it and, and then they won't be happy when they find that they have the same problems walking and driving that they do now. And if you don't have a warranty, the only street that they continue to come back on was Chattington. And the reason for that was that the person who was behind the reclamite contract was John Squire and that's the street he lives on and he kept complaining directly to the applicators. And they came back and did Chattington. That's why I'm aware of it. But no other street was ever redone. And I was told by the owner of the company that our street and Wickford, as examples, there were a whole bunch of others, should never have been selected and he had nothing to do with this election and didn't make the recommendation. That recommendation was made by the city and they went through on it.
Ms. Winger, just to clarify, the intent is not for aesthetics. The intent is for the actual long-term function of the road. So, but just real quick to clarify, you're saying that it doesn't look nice for that long. It's aesthetics is irrelevant, it's a matter of how long it will last.
But it didn't. That's my point. And so you can believe it and, you know, people can believe whatever they want, but it didn't last. It isn't a question of that, what do you mean by last? In other words, what they do is they go down and they stick something in the street and they claim that it helped, but there's no evidence of it to the people who live there. So if you want to go with that and you want to go tell people that they're wrong and that, that the street is better regardless of the fact that, that for their purposes it's not, fine. But this is not what people expect us to do when we fix streets.
Mr. Isbrand?
So I appreciate the perspective. I think what I'm trying to understand is, well, first to the question of a warranty, is it reasonable? Are we debating, are we discussing we want a warranty when in the course of normal business a warranty does or doesn't exist for this kind of work? So I'd like to understand what the expectation of that is. To the other point then, I appreciate and understand what you're saying about, you know, the aesthetic appeal doesn't last, but the question is, I think, does the work that it is, it is not intended to be in, to address aesthetics, but to address the ultimate integrity and longevity of the roads? So in those cases where, Ms. Winger, as an example, we talk about a year later, it didn't last, does that mean that there was a deterioration of the actual roads that extended beyond the aesthetic appeal? Is that what you're talking about?
Okay.
Do we, do we have, I don't know if, Mr. Rappley, this is something that you could answer then, so, so based on that, do we have a doc, a documentation or understanding of what that deterioration is that took place? And again, of whether this is a, a short-term fix or not a fix at all?
And again, it might have been a structural of the street, it could have been a base failure where it might have required a portion of the street to have a, a full depth. Again, you know, the street maintenance is, it doesn't last forever and that's what it is intended to do is to preserve the integrity of the street. And the data that is done with these O C I scores is for those reasons because this tells us what needs to be done at this particular time of this street. So our engineers went out when they developed this matrix to say, okay, here's the score, here are the things that need to be done. As you see on the map, not all of, some of these streets are in the great shape. There's some work that we have to get a contractor to do, which is some minor work to do some base repairs so they can come in and do these applications. So there might be sections or particular areas that may need a little bit more work, but again, this is the data that is provided, the engineers have done, and it's what's called for, for these particular streets at this time. You know, the longevity of these streets, probably, hopefully, we can get three, maybe four to five years of this application to help preserve the streets. But the, the street maintenance is a rolling document. You know, the idea is that we'll come back five years from now, put another application down, again, preserve that. But if the street deteriorates to a full depth, then we're going to spend some more money at, in the long term repairing that street. So the idea is, and then again, I like to elaborate a little bit, is 50% of our streets based on our O C I scores are in a full depth. So we need to take care of those at some point. Then we would come in with a seal coat application to try to preserve them for years to where we're not touching those streets in the long term other than maintenance.
Mr. Gregory?
I would, I would agree to this with the following caveat. The, I would approve this with conditions, that any specific or implied warranties that are given by the city of San Antonio or Bear County will apply to this job in Castle Hills. If no warranty is given, then it should come back to the council and let us know if there is no specific warranty.
Is that a motion? Are we talking...
That's a motion, yes. That's a motion.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a second?
I have a discussion.
Yes, ma'am, discussion.
Um, see, the problem, I know you're not going to agree with me, but I feel I need to say it anyway for the benefit of the taxpayers. And that is that it doesn't extend the life of the street. And all of the, this, basically, we don't need full-depth reclamation on all of our streets. Mill and overlay is a process that works. That gives you a better street for a certain period of time. This will give it for a very minimal period of time, but the contractor will tell you that the street has a longer life. But what does that mean? It doesn't mean anything to people who are using the street. So if you want to go ahead and vote for it, which clearly you do, you will, but it's, as far as the citizens are concerned, it's a waste of money.
Again, Mayor, real quick on that note, the repair rehabilitation matrix that's in our C I P for streets, it's designed by our engineers, have mill and overlay of an O C I score between 51 and 70, which requires a little more work, a little more cost. Eighty-four to 71 is the micro-surfacing. So every one of these 32 streets in our street maintenance program that were reviewed and designated by our engineers, they actually went out at that time when they put this document together and said, this is the exact score at this time.
Mr. Isbrand?
Mr. Rappley, when, when was that established?
So the street maintenance program was completed, I believe, in March of 2018. As I mentioned earlier, we went out for bids and we didn't get any bids. And so that's why we jumped on with the interlocal with the county for contractors.
So if those took place in March of 2018, were two years plus...
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, March of 2019.
19, is it...
City Council approved in December of 18 to initiate the engineering costs to develop the program.
And the scoring took place...
For these streets at that time.
In 2019.
2019. So there was already an existing O C I score. What they would do, because we have the cartograph, and so there was an associated O C, O C I score with each street. All they did was go in and revalidate that score to see if it's changed at that time.
Okay. And with what frequency, if you haven't done the work, should that revalidation take place?
I was told by our engineers that we need to evaluate our streets every five years.
Every five years?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, these 32 streets were confirmed last, early last year as far as their O C I score.
Okay. And may I ask one other thing?
Yes, sir.
It may be a terrible analogy, but in my simple mind to try to understand it, I go to the dentist to have preventative care done, my teeth cleaned, and we don't need to hear more about that. That doesn't guarantee that the next day I won't have a cavity. So I, I guess what I'm trying to understand in listening to Ms. Winger, your perspective on this, is I appreciate the concern about the quality of the roads. This isn't a guarantee that we won't have issues or a cavity come up, but it is intended to extend the life or the, or reduce the risk of some other issue. Is that...
Mr. Isbrand, I, I think you're spot on. And to take it a step further, because my much better half is a dentist, as you know, I would equate this to putting a sealant on a tooth, where you're not actually doing any physical work to the tooth, you're putting a coating on that's there to protect it as opposed to drilling and putting in, you know, a filling, which would be a full, like a drill and overlay, as opposed to replacing the tooth completely and getting an implant, which would be a full-depth like reclamation.
Right. And, and that's a very interesting analogy, Mr. Isbrand, but that is not the analogy that the slurry seal and reclamite people use. What they talk about is moisturizing the street. And moisturizing, as I said at the time, when I first came on council, is something I do every day. It doesn't make me any younger. So I'm all for taking care of, of teeth. And I understand your analogy basically would be that if, if somebody comes along, which is what could happen to your teeth, and that has happened on some of these streets where saws has come along and had to dig a hole and they didn't repair it properly, that would tie into your analogy because it would say, well, it's not their fault that something else happened. This is different. This is a moisturizer.
Mr. May?
After I've listened to everything that's gone on, I, I want to not miss the obvious, which is this is within budget and significantly within the budget. Of late, I come back to this phrase time and time again, which is an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And frankly, for this many streets, to have that high potentiality of preservation, I think is certainly worth the cost. I like Councilman Gregory's proviso here and caveat that's added. And with that, I guess I would call for the vote, call the question.
Thank you, Mr. May. So we have Mr. Gregory's amendment. We'll vote on that first. Oh, I'm sorry, I believe we have a comment from Ms. Scott and I, sometimes I forget we still have citizens to be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Marotta Scott, 207 Prince Drive. Is this better without the mask slightly? Can you hear?
Hey, can you turn the audio up chief, please?
Marotta Scott, 207 Prince Drive. Okay. I wanted to state that comparing reclamite to slurry seal is apples to oranges. Reclamite, the product, is a seal coat. All it is, is to use Mr. Isbrand's excellent analogy, which I've used myself before about dentistry. It would be like putting fluoride on your teeth. It's something you do to strengthen the teeth. Slurry sealing actually has aggregate involved and a seal coat combined together. And when it goes on the street, it is like sealing up your teeth. I have children and they get sealant on their teeth to protect them from potentially having cavities. It's not going to prevent all cavities, but to compare reclamite, like Ms. Winger is, to the slurry seal process that the city manager is recommending is apples to oranges. They're two different processes. And so when you do your learning, education, and research on the process of how to maintain your streets, it's, you need to learn what the different things are. So I was having a difficult time hearing reclamite being used because that's a seal coat. That's something you put on a street after it's new within the first two to three years to maintain its moisture barrier. It's not a moisturizer, it's a moisture protectant. It protects the street from having moisture penetrate into the aggregate and into the asphalt. Slurry seal does the same thing only to more extensive. And the fact that it adds aggregate, it smoothes it over a little bit, and it seals it, it's a water barrier. So that's what I wanted to say. To say that reclamite and slurry sealing are the same thing, that is not the case. So if you just do a little Googling, anyone can, that's the case. And I definitely want to say that I would love to see the slurry sealing done. We are so far behind on maintenance on our streets and maintenance is so important to keep us from getting those cavities and having to do full-depth reclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Mayor, the, as Ms. Scott, Ms. Scott's comments, that seal coat is, yes, that, as she spoke to, it's more of a seal coat, which would be on our higher scored O C I streets, which would be the next phase of our street maintenance program, which might be a similar or different application for whatever contractor is available at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
But the micro-surfing has different specifications than reclamite.
Thank you. And no further questions, we had to call for the vote. All in favor on the amendment? Yes, sir. All opposed? Amendment passes three to one with Ms. Winger voting against. And now on to the original motion. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes with Ms. Winger voting against. Okay, on to item number four. Discussion and possible action on having zoning commission review make a recommendation to the city council on the minimum lot, minimum lot size in the A single-family residential district. I placed this on the agenda because it became apparent to me that we do not have anything to prevent lots from being subdivided to a substantially smaller size. And I'd like to see that zoning commission can make a recommendation to change that to help us preserve the character of our neighborhood. I believe it's been brought to our attention recently and it's something that deserves us to look at because there's nothing to say that lots can get smaller and smaller. There's a lot of infill happening in downtown city of San Antonio where people are taking a lot and putting three or four homes. I applaud the entrepreneurial spirit. At the same time, I also want to be mindful of the character that we have here and that's why I brought this forward for us to discuss.
I have a question.
Ms. Winger?
I think it's a, a very, you know, nice idea and, and maybe it'll work, but the problem is that we, we have different neighborhoods in the city. And so just saying that we should have a minimum lot size, what about the fact that we have, you know, Castle Gardens and, and West Oaks and, and Palm Circle where they have smaller lot sizes? Does that become the minimum lot size? Because that's not going to work in every neighborhood. It would substantially change the neighborhoods and would cause exactly the kind of problem that you're trying to prevent. So I think what, what we really need to do here and we've needed for some time is to have, you know, either a formal approval of the master plan that we have, which by the way is in existence because it was approved by council. But if you want to do it again or simply make some changes to that and have a master plan where you're specifying the different sizes in the different neighborhoods, anything other than that, you're actually opening the door because we have, you know, areas where we have much smaller lots because the houses are built differently and they were designed that way.
Mr. Gregory?
Well, here, here's a problem I was going to bring up, not this time, but in May. What was approved was a comprehensive plan that the council labeled a master plan. A comprehensive plan is significantly different from a master plan. But that council in its brilliance merged the two, so I'm not really sure what it is. A, a master plan does not go into the depths of saying what neighborhood can have a lot this and that size. A comprehensive plan does that. Now, what we have and apparently what was voted on was a comprehensive plan that they labeled a master plan. So that's in effect. It has never been overturned. And so if you really want to see what is germane, you have to go to that and to see how it conflicts or conforms with the existing code. So we have what's called a master plan, even though it isn't. It's a comprehensive plan. But a master plan will not go into the specifics of lot sizes. It's not intended to.
Sure.
A master plan generally is where do you see the city in five years or 10 years? That's all a master plan is. A comprehensive plan gets into the nuts and bolts.
Any further comments? Mr. Isbrand, you look pensive.
I, I, um, I, I appreciate... I, I, um, I, I appreciate the, the comments of both of y'all. Thank you for that. I don't see that there would be any harm in moving this forward and giving us more information to consider. We still have the whole zoning ordinance to come back before us. I believe the last, the last election, or last election, the last council meeting, we directed that to come to us at our next regularly scheduled meeting in May. I don't know that this could be addressed before then, but I certainly think it would be helpful to at least direct that we receive it and give us information to consider as we move forward.
And I would completely agree with you. All I'm saying is that I've seen that we have an area that needs to be addressed, whether it's in the Fox Hall area or on Honeysuckle, where we had the house that burned down. Somebody conceivably buy that lot and split it into two or three homes, and I believe that that would not be in character with the existing area. I'm not suggesting that this may fix everything, but I think that it's a good start for us to at least have some temporary protection and refine what needs to be addressed for the individual areas and implement a full master plan, which we've heard people talk about for years now.
Right.
As he, he points out, it, we're probably talking, there's a different term for it, and that's fine. I wasn't aware of the different terms. But the, I think, as I said, I think that what you're intending to do is a good thing, and I have no objection to sending it to zoning. The, the only thing is, I would hope that zoning wasn't misled the way they have been in the past, and given information is different from what the council has voted on. So I have no objection to having zoning look into this. I think, you know, you're right, they're the right people to do it. But they need to know what is expected and not be told that they have to vote on something else, which, as you know, is what happened in the past.
Well, so with, with that said, let me make a motion, see if we can make it as clear as possible, so that we're all comfortable with that, that a move that we direct the zoning commission to review and make a recommendation to the city council on the minimum lot size in the A single-family residential district.
Could, could we just, just an amendment, because, as I said before, and, and this addresses the mayor's concern, it has to be by neighborhood. Because if you, if you simply say A single-family, well, Castle Gardens is A single-family, West Oaks is A single-family, but their lot size is considerably smaller. And there's some variation even there on the lot size. So if you take the smallest lot in each place and you say, that's the minimum lot size, then exactly what the mayor is concerned about could happen on Honeysuckle, where somebody could say, well, this is the minimum lot size, and we could divide this lot in two. And it's been done before on Honeysuckle, by the way, because a house was put on a lot that was actually a tennis court. And somebody shoehorned a, a lot in there, and there was nothing to stop it. So I think his intentions are very, very good. But you need to specify that it, it has to be by the neighborhood, and that they have to consider what's basically there for the neighborhood, and not to change the character of the neighborhood. And I think that's what you're talking about, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Winger. Mr. Gregory, before I get to you, Mr. Schnell has some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, to, to respond briefly to a comment Ms. Winger made about areas where there were smaller lots, those areas, I believe, are all either zoned AA or are in planned unit developments, PUDs. In each instance, those characteristics, those zoning matters were determined by a prior city council in approving the planned unit development. The one I'm thinking of is the one off of West Avenue, up the street from Antonian High School, and that is a planned unit development where, as part of that kind of zoning, the lot sizes don't have to comply with the A single-family district. The current language for the A single-family district says that all building lots in this district shall contain not less than 14,000 square feet. To the extent Castle Gardens area, that area, you know, off West Avenue between Northwest Military and Lock Hill Selma, have lots that are about 14,000 square feet or in that vicinity and are zoned A single-family. Nothing would change on any existing lot. They, all the existing single-family, A single-family district lots are grandfathered, so that no one needs to be concerned about their lot being too small if a change were made in this minimum lot size. But I, I don't see a way, short of changing zoning district, the zoning classification of a specific neighborhood within our city, for the minimum lot size on Honeysuckle to be different from the minimum lot size on Sunflower. If they're all A single-family zoned properties, then they're going to be all controlled by the minimum lot size in the A single-family district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Mr. Gregory?
Well, what Mr. Schnell brings up is the problem. I have firsthand experience with it. I, my brother and I inherited the homestead in Alamo Heights. It was, it was almost an acre. All the houses and lots on the block were an acre. Across the street were an acre. I sold my half to my brother. He immediately divided it and crammed a 5,000-square-foot house on a half an acre, and I think the neighbors thought he was the Frankenstein monster. They were ready to kill him. And I can understand that, because you're going to have, you, you may have to go street by street. I don't know whether that's constitutional or not, but the streets are of sufficient difference. You may have to take into account what is the typical street size of Twin Leaf versus Honeysuckle versus North Manton. There, the lots are significantly different, and one size can't fit all, but zoning commission may be able to take the time to draw up something to say, somehow address the fact that the lots are different on differing streets. And I don't know how to do it, but zoning would have to. Mr. Schnell was head of zoning for a long time, Mr. Isbrand. I mean, with all these people that have done it, I'm confident they can come up with something that'll keep something like what my brother did for the street in Alamo Heights from happening over here.
And Mr. Schnell, do you have any comments on that?
As I said, I think to do something like that would require a, creating a new zoning district, or more than one new zoning district, or, or sub-districts of some kind, with different kinds of rules across the board. I mean, this is one of the reasons why the AA district was created in the last, I'd say 20 years ago, was to, you know, address situations where the trends were that folks were looking for living in a, in a wonderful quality community, but not having as large a lot to be responsible for maintaining or paying to have maintained. But I, I do not see how we can have a different minimum lot size on Street A in the A single-family district than on Street B, if it's also in the single-family, A single-family district. We can certainly look at possibilities and look at sub-districts, but I, I think we may be trying to, to solve a problem that isn't really the concern behind this request.
And, and my concern, to be completely honest, is that if we spend a year developing a system that I think could work and should work, what would happen in that time?
Right. Somebody, and I understand what you're saying because of what we just went through, and the idea being that what do we do in case of a replat? And, and why do we have to deal with that if you have rules in place? And, and I, I totally agree with you. All I'm saying is, you know, for example, in my neighborhood, we have deed restrictions. But if you suddenly come in and you supersede that by saying, that doesn't count anymore, and you can, and you can divide something up and, and turn it into two lots, because that's the minimum size, then you continue to have the same problem, and worse than that, you then have a problem in denying a replat, because you've created a situation that allows for it. So somehow, the zoning commission has to struggle with this. And whether it means that they have to set up different neighborhoods, we don't have that many neighborhoods in town, so I think it's possible.
Mr. Isbrand?
Yeah, Mayor, it's, I appreciate this discussion, and, and what I would say, I don't think we should leap to judgment on what the outcome should be. We are simply asking them to look at something. And I would hope, Ms. Winger, to your point, that they would perceive all the issues that you have brought up, and all the issues that will be brought up here. To use my phrase, I would see, in this case, the zoning commission perhaps as what we call a study group, who better to do an initial assessment of this and bring some feedback to council than the zoning commission? So that's why I would encourage us to allow that, it doesn't hurt to take a look, perhaps to identify the depth of the kinds of issues that you're talking about or potential solutions. But I would think that that would be an appropriate place for them to take a look and come back with us without saying, we're recommending you must do A, B, and C, but this is what we've discovered from our investigation of it and the complexity or lack thereof of what you would come up against in trying to address it.
Mr. May?
It seems like there's really no downside to asking for a recommendation from the zoning commission, and they're going to have to weigh in if there's any particular proposal in the future. So with that, I, there's a motion. I'm going to second the motion.
I, I would like for it to be time-specific, but again, I think it gets to perhaps the complexity of what they're, they're going to look at. And maybe our motion, in fact, would be to, with all expediency, but I don't want to be unreasonable to them in evaluating this.
And I'm confident that the zoning commission is eager to get back to work, and it'll be on the top of their agenda. But, so we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. All right. Announcements by Mayor and City Council members on items of community interest. Mr. Isbrand?
Yes, Mayor, unless, this city council should be called back in session for a special meeting. I'm aware that this will be Ms. Winger's last meeting with us, and I would simply like to take this moment to extend my best wishes to you. I hope you stay in good health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. May?
I just wanted to encourage everyone to continue supporting our local business, and at the same time, just be mindful of the fact that everything we do together to keep everyone safe is going to ultimately help us. If we have citizens that are ill, that is certainly not in our best bottom-line interest. So keep the mask on, keep the distancing, be smart, and be safe.
Thank you, Mr. May, Ms. Winger. Gregory? I just want to add that this, I've been on lots of conference calls and getting information everywhere I possibly can, and the good news is that we are slightly past the peak in the plateau for the COVID-19 pandemic, at least here in Texas, in San Antonio specifically. And while the governor wants to open things back up, any precautions that you can take to ensure that you protect yourself and, as a result, your loved ones, would be a great idea. There's a lot of people that are working very hard to keep things safe, to keep the city moving forward. Not, none of the least, you know, our police and our fire and our public works, who have worked seamlessly to keep the city moving forward. So I'm, I'm grateful, and I would encourage you to social distance as best as possible, use your mask, clean your hands, as Mr. Isbrand is, and stay safe, so we can see you in the council chambers very soon. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. First, I'm Ms. Winger. Second, I'm Mr. May. All in favor? Good evening.